If I could have your attention for just one minute. I'd like to start this meeting off, we've got a little special meeting tonight. And we have the Zion Queens that are gonna run our meeting for a short time here. And I'd like to introduce Little Miss Zion, Jordan Gaston.[23.34][23.34][applause] Junior Miss Zion, Janice Alinky.[32.22][32.22][applause] And Miss Zion, Angelina Andrade.[38.54][38.54][applause]
I call this meeting to order. Please follow the roll.[49.28][49.28][laughter]
Commissioner DeTeen?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner McKenney?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here.
May I have Pastor Langley please come forward and lead us in prayer?
I'd be glad to. In the Old Testament, the prophet Jeremiah tells God's people to pray for the welfare of the city where God has placed them. It's a remarkable command because they are in hostile territory. They've been conquered by people who hate them and relocated to that city. Nonetheless, God says, pray for the welfare of that city because in its welfare you'll find your welfare. How much more should we pray for the welfare of a city where those in leadership are not hostile to the people of God but honor the heritage of our city and in fact welcome prayer? So it's my privilege to ask you to bow with me and we will pray. Father, we ask boldly for the welfare of Zion. We ask for your blessing on this meeting, that those at the tables and in positions of authority would so lead that this town and its people, those of faith and of no faith, will prosper and benefit because of good leadership. Use this meeting to that end. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.[140.01][140.01][applause]
Now will you all please stand and say your prayers.[143.69][143.69][applause]
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[162.12][162.12][applause]
Thank you.
Thank you ladies.[165.12][165.12][applause] Oops. Has agenda changes? Are there any agenda changes to tonight's agenda?
Mayor Hill, only on the announcements, just like to recognize we have the community of character walk on September 19th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Zion Park District Van Shell.
Okay. That's you. Any other changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
A second. Clerk please call her own.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is special presentation of the Jubilee Days Parade Awards and Supervisor Neal and I believe the Fire Chief are going to...
Just the Queens.
Oh, the Queens are gonna help give out the awards, okay.
On behalf of the Jubilee Days Committee, I just want to thank everyone that's been involved with community and character efforts. It has been an incredible year and a half and to be able to showcase it at our parade this year was a lot of fun. And there were a lot of participants that really embraced the character traits, respect, responsibility, safety, kindness, perseverance, and integrity. And we just want to thank all of you in the room for doing exactly that and that's part of the reason why you're winning awards. The other reason was because they were outstanding. Floats besides that. So I would like to begin, girls. The first award is the 2015 Mayor's Trophy and that goes to Our Lady of Humility School. Would you like to come up?[303.19][303.19][applause] The next award is the 2015 Jubilee Director's Choice and this award goes to the Zion Betan The next award is the 2015 Theme Prize, which is being awarded to the Kiwanis Club And the next award, the 2015 Sweepstakes Trophy goes to the Beach Community Church, The next award was the 2015 President's Choice.[447.69][447.69][laughter] The next award is the 2015 President's Choice. It goes to Cornerstone Realty Group. Oh my gosh, if any of you did not see that, well, you were posted there.[473.81][473.81][applause] They were too embarrassed to show up in their costumes.[486.12][486.12][laughter] Okay, so then the next award goes to, is the 2015 Specialty Award and it goes to the And last but not least, the 2015 Grand Jubilee Trophy. And that goes to our very own 2015 Zion Queens.[547.38][547.38][applause] Mayor, can we get a picture with the Queens, the Lake County Queens, for some of it?
Sure.
Girls, could we get with the...
With the mayor?
Yeah, with the mayor and the two. It's not every day we get the Lake County Queens in our community, okay? This is royal. Nancy, can we... We're over here. Jordan. Over.[583.29][583.29][laughter] As we call them, Mamarazzi. Thank you so much for getting here to make a picture of us, okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. I would like to extend the appreciation of the entire City Council for all the people on the Jubilee Days Committee and all the people that participated in Jubilee Days. And it was a wonderful weekend and thank you very much. We're gonna take a 30-second break. For all of you that don't want to stay for the rest of the City Council meeting, you can have an opportunity to sneak out now without feeling guilty.[646.12][646.12][laughter] Number six on the agenda is citizens' comments. First is WC, Mr. WC Bremner from Zion.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, honorable gentleman, gentle ladies. At the last meeting, the mayor pointed out these documents, historical documents, from Zion's history. They are impressive, but I would respectfully remind you that during normal working hours, these chambers are secure and I would request that if it is feasible, that these documents be put out in the lobby where everyone can see them. I do thank you for your time, your courtesy, and your attention to this matter.
Thank you. I would also like to point out that all the framing and frames were donated by a city employee, which is very nice. Second on these citizens' comments is Mr. Clyde McLemore from Zion.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Mr. Mayor, I don't want to make this personal, but when you keep throwing stones, I have to fight my way back. Mr. Mayor, at our last council meeting, you made a statement that you had a reliable source to speak to Audrey Nixon and she said she never told you. The fact of the matter is my integrity. I notice all over the city Zion signs stating integrity. Integrity means the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles and moral uprightness. Mr. Mayor, I spoke to a council member, Audrey Nixon, again, and her response was nobody talked to her on the grants or about me. I would go a step further, she says she don't even know who the mayor is in Zion. This was not, this not, this is no longer about integrity. This is a straight lie. I question your honesty. I watched you campaign for this position. I watched you promise changes will come to our city. As I said last council meeting, again, the question of your honesty and only changes is the name on the door. I do not ever remember saying to you I wanted to be somebody. On February the 5th, 1959, I became somebody. I think you might have misunderstood me. I did ask you to be on some of your boards or to help change the dynamics of this city. I thought working with you would help enhance the relationship with the citizens of our city. I am pretty sure you misunderstood my statement, telling you I wanted to be somebody, or that was a pretty low statement. If only, it only shows me what, how you look at me. Again, I'm not being personal and do not want to make this personal, but my integrity should not be misjudged, misunderstood for myself or the citizens of Zion. Thank you for your time.
Item number seven on the agenda is a consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on September 1st, 2015, 7:01 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on September 1st, 2015, at 8:20 PM. Bills, vouchers 121-754 through 121-847 drawn on First Merit Bank, total $320,000, 320,201,070.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is consider passing ordinances follows. Eight A, amend section 10-302 and section 94-43 of the Zion Municipal Code regarding water conservation for Director Ionson.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioners. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources recently amended the Lake Michigan Water Allocation Rules and Regulations, section 3730-307C. The updated rules modify two provisions that would require domestic permitees to update their ordinances, building codes, to be consistent with the new language. This provision, these provisions are requiring that all new and replacement plumbing fixtures be labeled WaterSense product as specified in the U.S. EPA and to restrict nonessential outside water uses to prevent excessive wasteful water use.
Director Ionson, this is a requirement from the, this is the U.S. EPA that's requiring this?
Actually, it's the Illinois Department of, Department of Resources.
But is the U.S. EPA the one that's mandating this for Illinois?
The guidelines are from the U.S. EPA.
Are these products readily available for consumers to purchase?
From my understanding, the WaterSense products, the fixtures have been available for purchase, yes.
If we were a homeroad community, would we be obligated to follow these EPA and IDNR regulations?
Yes. That doesn't matter if it's homeroad or not homeroad.
It's my understanding that this is coming from the Lake Michigan Water Allocation Permittees and that in order to maintain our allocation of water from Lake Michigan, we have to follow their regulations and...
But it looks like it's coming down from the federal government to the state government to the water.
Local.
Lake Michigan water.
I think the, do you have any idea how much more this would cost a homeowner to build a new home, to have these things?
To be honest, I do not know that.
Ron, do you have any idea? The interesting point on this is the, do I got the right one here? Is this the restrictions on when you can water your grass?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I just, I think the general public needs to be aware of this and I'm assuming we'll get information out on our website as soon as we can, but it says, "The adoption of ordinances that restrict nonessential outside water use to prevent excessive wasteful use. These shall provide that unrestricted water sprinkling will not be allowed from May 15th through September 15th of each year by requiring as a minimum that lawn sprinkling shall not occur on consecutive days, nor shall any lawn sprinkling occur during at least a six-hour period in the middle of the day, 10:00 AM through 4:00 PM, and noon to 6:00 PM, when evaporation is at its highest. New lawns less than three months old may be exempted from this provision. In addition, new replacement sprinkler systems shall be equipped with a WaterSense labeled irrigation controller." So they're making an effort to conserve water, which I think is a good thing, especially when you consider what's happening in California.
This would mean that the golf courses would have to follow this restriction as well, is that correct?
I believe that that would be correct, but they generally water at night anyway.
Yeah. And if they have to replace one of their sprinkler heads, it has to be replaced with a sprinkler that's labeled WaterSense?
I think they are right now.
Okay.
I think, I'm not sure. Is there a motion on this ordinance? You have a motion?
Second.
A second? Okay. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner DeTeen?
No.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
I just don't think we have a choice.
I don't think we have a choice either.
Yeah. So, aye.
Commissioner McKenney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number nine is discussion authorization and approval. Nine A's, consider zoning dock at 15-Z-8, requesting a variance from section 102-32 parentheses 3 parentheses to allow the new front entrance to extend an additional 12 feet past the building line as petitioned by Cleveland Givens Sea Force Construction for Pentecostal Ministries Church for Director Ionson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval with the conditions that the use remain a church.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Cleveland Givens contracted for Pentecostal Ministries Church located at 3244 Gilliot is seeking a variance from section 102-323 to allow the new front entrance to extend additional 12 feet past the building line. To date, the plans have been approved for permits except for the new front entrance. Currently, the existing setback, currently the existing building is set back 22 feet from the property line and 39 feet from the curb line. The new front entrance will be set back 10 feet from the property line and 27 feet from the curb line. At the September 3rd, 2015 planning and zoning meeting, the board recommended approval with conditions that the use remains a church.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine B, tabulation of bids, 2015 tree removal for Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your packet of bid tabulations for this year's tree removal project, the city received four bids for the project and staff is requesting and recommending acceptance of the lowest responsible bidder, Clean Cut Tree Services of Graveslake, Illinois, for the base bid and the alternate bid amount for a total of $31,833.0. This is a budgeted item under line item 1004102162 trees.
So moved.
You have a motion?
I just have some questions. So, Winkler's Tree and Landscaping Incorporated submitted a bid with no alternate bid?
Correct.
And you're thinking, did that make that an irresponsible bid?
No, but they still weren't the lowest. Clean Cut Tree Services also beat them on the base bid. They were still the lowest on both, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, well, I mean, what I'm, the memo that you sent, they're coming in at 23,875 and Clean Cut is 31,833.
Right, what we did is we added additional three blocks of tree removal in, into the project.
Oh, I, that's what you meant.
And they didn't bid on the exit, right. Exactly.
All right. I understand. And it's your estimate to remove all the trees that need to be removed will cost the city $600,000?
If we got the same prices that these people delivered to us, yes, that could be somewhere in that neighborhood, which is a lot better than a couple million that was estimated maybe three or four years ago. Staff has done a lot in the subdivisions to take care of a lot of them on our own.
Is there any way that homeowners, like if the tree is in the parkway that needs to be removed, maybe they want the firewood? Is there any way that a homeowner could be allowed to cut those trees down?
We'll take any assistance we can. We allow it. We've had that request come in from a few people.
Oh, and you say you allow it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why, I mean, the city's financial situation, I don't see why we would not want to do it.
Do we have anybody, has anybody signed on waivers?
What's that? We've only had like maybe two requests, so if you want to incorporate that, we can.
Yeah, we probably, before we do that, we probably need to get legal involved on some type of a waiver, in case they drop a tree on somebody's car or whatever.
Well, I look for firewood every year and I mean, if the city needs trees cut down, I'd be happy to cut.
I know some other communities may have, I'll check with some other communities, they may, there may be some policies in place for that where you'd have to have waivers and stuff like that. You know, one of the alternatives is if they, if they stay up there too long, they may fall on their own because they're dead decayed.
Do we have a second on that?
No.
Second. Okay, thank you. We're gonna talk to public works and...
I know, I know somebody's gonna say there's liability issues.
I will say this, to give you a little bit more comfort, the requests we've had have been by licensed tree removal companies, not just a resident with his own chainsaw walking out and all.
So not a homeowner that has a dead tree in the parkway?
Nope. Well, if they're, if they're that large, in most cases, they're gonna hire somebody to do it. You have to, you have to be equipped to do it. That's why we're doing the same thing, that's why we're going on a bid right now.
Because you have to climb on most of these.
A lot of those you have to climb or you have to have an aerial truck that's a lot larger than the one the city has.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second? Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine C, tabulation of bids, streetlight maintenance and repair for Director Colangelo.
Thank you again. What you have is the lone bid for streetlight maintenance and repair services. Staff is requesting and recommending awarding the contract to Hometown Electric Incorporated of Lake Villa, Illinois, at a rate of $175 per hour. These services are used on an as-needed basis.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
A second? Is there discussion?
Is that a prevailing wage rate?
Yes, it is.
Is there a distinction between city lights, because I've had some issues in the neighborhood
where it's Commonwealth Edison will say it's not our, it's the city's light and not our light?
There, yeah, there's a rate 23 and a rate 25 on streetlights. If a homeowner reports the light, we're able to determine who it belongs to, whether it's maintenance responsibility of the city or Commonwealth Edison. In the old part of town, most of the, 99% of the alley lights on wooden poles are common responsibility, so that we have to forward to them for them to do the repair.
Is there, is that a, is there a reason we only got one bid on this?
I have no idea. I talked to somebody, we put it out there to some of the local companies and, you know, you're stuck in between, you know, you have to have either like a smaller company or it's, it's not a big, it's not like a big enough contract since it's as needed for like a, you know, larger electrical companies, the dead item.
Okay, and them being from Lake Villa wouldn't be a problem?
No, they have to respond within X amount of time per the bid specs.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second? Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine D is tabulation of bids, 2015 surface removal and replacement program per Director Colangelo.
Thank you again. Attaches are the base and alternate bid tabulations for the 2015 street patch program. Unfortunately, due to the inability of state legislature to pass the budget, the city's motor fuel tax receipts are not being received at this time. Unfortunately, this will not allow us to accept the alternate bid as planned. Therefore, staff requests and recommends awarding the project to the lowest responsible bidder, J. Johnson Paving of Arlington Heights, Illinois, for the base bid in the amount of Funding for this project is for the motor fuel tax fund and copies of bid tabulations are unfiled in the city clerk's public office offices.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion? Second? Is there discussion?
So when those funds are released from the state, that's when we can begin the project?
No, we can only do the, we can do the project now, but we can only do the base amount. Normally when we go out to bid, we always have a base and an alternate depending to see if you could bid back. You can expand the project or reduce it. So our wish list got whittled out a little bit.
Further discussion?
If funds are available from the motor fuel tax, will we be able to come back and extend this project?
No, we will not. They'll already be out of town by then.
Just looking at our state record.
I did want to read the memo, but it is what it is.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine E, discussion...
Item 9E, Discussion Regarding Notice from Constellation Energy Regarding the City of Zion Electric Aggregation Program for Mayor Hill. And I have to confess that I'm somewhat at a loss to be able to explain this accurately, but there has been a, as you know, we went out and, as a city, and bid the electric rates, and we came in with a price from Constellation. And they have sent us a letter saying that there'll be changes in the, our price, but they're not sure what the prices are going to be. And the backstory is this for the letter you received from Constellation. You may recall the polar vortex winter of 2014. That winter was so extreme that our electric grid was pushed to its limit. Usage due to heating nearly exceeded capacity, which would have led to rolling brownouts during extremely cold condition. This would have led to dire consequences, homes without heating during extreme frigid conditions. As such, the regulatory body overseeing our regional grid has taken steps to ensure such circumstances are not repeated. Their goal is to enhance the availability of power during our grid's most stressed periods. And what they're saying is that there'll be an auction later on in the year that will address Constellation's ability to get more energy here. And the way you get more energy here is you have to pay a higher price, otherwise it'll go to the highest bidder someplace else. And we have to sign a letter, and this is what is for the council, that says that, in your letter, you stated that Constellation does not wish to commence any required negotiations until shortly after the auction results are final, and all required data to calculate a potential price impact have been made available. The City of Zion agrees to your request to postpone a 30-day negotiation period until later date once all the required data is available. So we're agreeing to wait till, for 30 days after all the auctions and after they know what the price is, before we'll get a new price on what, how that's going to impact our electric rates in the winter. So we're signing a letter to, sign a letter.
When this service was first offered, this aggregation service was offered to the residents of Zion, we had a choice whether to accept it or not. I mean, each individual resident had a choice whether to accept it or not. So with this renegotiation, will that still be the case? Those that are with Constellation, will they have a choice to go back to ComEd if they choose?
It's my understanding that the rate will be the same with, the increase will be the same with Constellation as ComEd. I don't know if people have the chance to go back. I think we'll have to find that out, but the rate should stay the same. Yeah, they do?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess you can, that's right. Get out at any time.
And it seems like this is a, for Constellation, they serve, looks like all of Illinois, southern Wisconsin, parts of Indiana, and Ohio, so it looks like this is affecting that whole region.
Yes.
Not just us.
Is there a motion?
And what we're approving is the sending of a letter agreeing to delay, or agreeing to allow them another 30 days to come up with their next best price. So was that moved yet or not?
No.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
You have a motion? In a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Departmental commentary?
Let the residents know advance disposal will begin fall week pickup on October 19th, so they will make four passes in front of each residence. Time to regular garbage day.
Item number 11 is Announcements. On September 19th, from 11:00 to 1:00 o'clock, there's a Community of Character Walk, which will start at the Zion Park District Van Shell and proceed to the police station. Please join us. I believe last year, there were approximately 800 people that were involved in this walk, so please come out and support our community of character. September 25th, at 3:00 p.m., there'll be a Liquor Control Commission meeting. That meeting was originally scheduled for the 14th, but it had to be moved back to the 21st, so it'll be September 21st. And I apologize to the people who are anxiously awaiting that meeting. September 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., the last day of Zion Farmer's Market in Sheridan Road in Shiloh Boulevard. October 6th, at 7:00 p.m., is Zion City Council meeting. October 20th, at 6:30 Zion Township meeting. 7 o'clock is Zion City Council meeting. October 30th, at 5:00 p.m., there's a, make sure I get this correct, Trail of Treats that will go through Shiloh Park. This is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Zion, but it's really all the work's being done by the Chamber of Commerce. And there will be local businesses out there providing treats for the kids. It will start at the south end of Shiloh Park, very close to the concession stand. It will proceed through the walkway or the roadway through Shiloh Park to the north end, and then it will continue, if you so wish, at the Zion Park District Halloween Party at the leisure center from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., where there will be games and treats and costume judging and a lot of things like that. Then on October 31st, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., are the Zion Trick or Treat hours. 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., October 31st. Is there a motion to adjourn? You have a motion?
Second.
In a second.
Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
We didn't forget you. Everything arrived, everything arrived this week, okay? It's just a lot. I need more people to help.